Good evening, I'd like to welcome everybody to the March 5th, 2014 Meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We have a quorum present, so I'll call this meeting to order. The first item on tonight's agenda is to approve the minutes of the February 5th, 2014 Planning Commission meeting. If there's no additions or corrections to those minutes, I'll declare them approved as submitted. We have three public hearings on tonight's agenda. Briefly, the first one is zoning application for an amendment of Kingdom Ridge PUD approximately 266 acres and removal of approximately 19 acres and rezoning it from PUD to commercial highway along Franklin Highway, State Route, Highway 96. Joseph M. Swanson Jr. on behalf of Swanson Development is applicant. Ms. Green?
Thank you, sir.
How are you?
Good, thanks. Our first public hearing this evening is for you to consider amending the PUD zone for the property which we know as Kingdom Ridge, which is located south of Highway 96, also known as Franklin Road or Old Fort Parkway. It's also located west of Rucker Lane, and you can see that on the map before you. The request is actually a two-part request, with the first part to amend approximately 266 acres of the Kingdom Ridge PUD, which is identified in the orange color. The second part of the request is to rezone a portion of property, which is approximately 19 acres, from PUD to CH, and that's identified in the blue color on the map before you. So this request is a two-part request. This property was annexed and zoned PUD in 2003, and of course, the development of Kingdom Ridge was then approved. Developer of the project desires to update the PUD zoning in light of recent changes, and specifically the school which is being located next door, and also changes in market conditions. I mentioned that this is a two-part request. One is to zone a 19-acre tract to CH, and the other is to amend the PUD. To be more specific with amending the PUD, it will be to make adjustments to the street network, to account for a street extension across overall creek, to allow for a new street connection to the new school, which is the property identified as RS-15. And it's also to reduce the minimum lot size for potential lots in the area designated for 10,000 square feet minimums to an 8,000 square foot minimums, and those are lots that are currently undeveloped and located within the interior of the property. Included with the agenda materials and also couriered to you as a program book amendment, which outlines the changes, you should have those available to you. The applicant's representative, Ms. Cherie Akers, would like to give a brief presentation before the public hearing, and she has a PowerPoint she'd like to go through with the details of the change. If any questions, of course, staff would be glad to answer them either before or after the public hearing, but you should conduct a public hearing prior to making your recommendation to City Council.
Hi, good evening. Cherie Akers with Hudson Steel, and I am presenting on behalf of Mr. Joe Swanson Jr. of Swanson Development, the developer of the PUD. Hang on, bear with me. It's not going. There we go. As she has indicated, we are proposing an amendment to the existing Kingdom Ridge PUD, which is comprised of approximately 285 acres. The PUD was originally approved with a number of land uses, single-family, multifamily, and commercial uses. This is a map showing the existing PUD, how it's approved today. Parcel A was approved for approximately 583 single-family lots, residential single-family lots. Parcel B, 41 single-family lots and/or a church could also be placed on that parcel. Parcel C, which is the parcel there south of 96, that was designated as commercial. It was approved for some local commercial uses originally. And then Parcel D was an amendment to the PUD back in 2008, which allowed for RM16 multifamily, and they're currently approved for 360 multifamily units. To date, approximately 181 single-family lots are constructed today. As Ms. Akers indicated, we are amending the PUD, a two-part process. One is to reduce the lot size. I'm just going to go to that, this map here, the master plan, the proposed master plan. The green area on the map is where we're proposing to reduce the lots from 10,000 square feet to 8,000 square feet. Again, this is interior to the lot. The black and white portion of the property is showing you what's existing today and already plotted. These lots are not proposing to change the minimum house size at all. It will remain as is, which is a minimum of 1,400 square feet. We are not reducing the house size, only the lot size. This is due to a number of issues, one being that the market has changed and buyers are potentially wanting and desiring to have smaller lots for less maintenance costs and upkeep. In addition, the city has adopted additional stormwater regulations, which require the developer to set aside some additional land in the remaining portions of the property in order to accommodate these regulations. And you'll see them as these white pockets in those green areas, that's some areas that were designated for detention that were not previously shown on the plan or planned for. And so in an effort to make up for those loss of lots, we have reduced some to 8,000 as well. And then finally, the cost of development in the last few years has also increased, and which the developer needs to offset those costs and have some additional lots. The overall gain in lots is approximately 41 lots. However, the previous plan really never designated a total amount of lots that were approved, so it was never clear exactly how many lots were previously approved. The second is to change the internal street pattern, mainly that main road coming off into the development from 96. That is a 90-foot right away as you come into the development, and the intent was to continue that throughout the development and connect to the south property, to the south of the subdivision. However, that property, Merrymont Springs, since the time of approval now, is private streets, so the connection is no longer warranted. So we're reconfiguring that street pattern to just serve the Kingdom Ridge PUD alone. And the third is to show that future connection across overall creek, because now there is a school plan there, and we're showing a future connection that if the city were to want to connect or the school board to the Kingdom Ridge PUD. And the final request is to remove that parcel C that you see up on Highway 96. Again, it was previously approved for some local commercial uses. We feel at this time, since the original development, it's more appropriate for commercial highway. Veterans Parkway, while it was anticipated at the time, it was not constructed, and today it is. So that area now is more appropriate for a commercial node that can serve the future needs of the entire area. With the new changes, we're essentially developing the parcel now with a total of 670 single-family units on parcel A. Parcel B will still maintain the 41 originally approved. Parcel C will now be removed, and we're asking for a subsequent rezoning to commercial high, and parcel D will remain as 360 multifamily units. It equates to approximately 2.75 units per acre overall within the PUD. Again, I just want to clarify, there are no modifications to the size of the homes. The same models will be offered as previously approved in the PUD, and all other conditions will remain as previously approved. Again, the subject is well-suited for the proposed density and the proposed removal of the parcel and rezoning to CH, and to serve the surrounding communities and future growth needs. And if you have any other questions, we'll be happy to answer them. And Mr. Swanson is here and be happy to answer any questions as well.
Any questions by members of the Planning Commission of Ms. Okay. Before we open the public hearing, I'll briefly go over the rules we conduct our public hearings by. We'll open the public hearing. Anybody that'd like to speak is welcome to come forward to the microphone if you would, state your name, and give your address if you would. Looks like we have several people that might want to speak tonight, so we will be asking you to keep your comments as brief as possible, no more than three minutes in timeline. Make all your comments or questions to the Planning Commission. If you do have questions, our staff will make a note of your questions. We'll try to get your questions answered at the conclusion of the public hearing. Once again, any comments, make them to the Planning Commission itself and not the audience, and we will try to address those. That being said, we'll open the public hearing at this time. Invite anybody to come forward that would like to speak. Anybody at all? Somebody's got to start.
My name is Joe Spalding. I live at 4907 Compassion Lane. We're, as a group, very concerned about our property being depreciated. Our property backs up directly, backs to this property that they're proposing now for this new development. The original model house we had seen was over 14,000 square feet. We were told the, with the apartments that went in, we were told that was going to be high-end houses. That has depreciated our property for sure. Our property is 11.88, almost 12,000 square feet. So with 8,000 behind us and more houses and smaller, we can't see how it's going to not depreciate our property, and we're very concerned about that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. I live at 4867 Burl Drive in the Kingdom Ridge subdivision. My concern-
What, give your name, sir, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Anthony Ventrella. My concern is, I can understand the concern about the lots, but my primary concern is taking the commercial property out of the pud. I really don't think that's necessary. To change it to commercial highway at the entrance to the subdivision could have a drastic impact on the desirability of our neighborhood, as well as cause, as it is now, the traffic going out of the subdivision trying to cross over 96 is horrendous. My children go to Blackman High School in the morning. It could literally take me 10 minutes to cross over 96 because of all the traffic coming from the west, and the kids, you know, they start turning onto Brinkley. The people haven't started moving into the apartment yet. They went from 12 units per acre to 16 units per acre. There has to be something done as far as traffic control, and the subdivision's just not set up for that. You know, it's a side street. It could probably take 20 minutes to get out of the subdivision once that apartment property gets full. And then you take into account if they change it to commercial highway, that means open game. It could be a Walmart, it could be a Target, it could be a Home Depot. We have no control over it. Right now, as we live there, being in the pud, we have some say-so of what's going to happen on that property. It has to benefit the community. If they take it out, it's not going to benefit Kingdom Ridge. So there was a reason it was put in the pud in the first place. I don't believe, and I believe everyone here would agree, there is no good reason to take it out of the pud. They can still do something commercial that will benefit the community and not impact us as if it was out of the thing. And we're just asking for your help to protect us from that happening. Thank you.
My name is Jim Brownreider, and I live at 4930 Pillar Drive, and looking to change that area to high commercial along Covenant Boulevard there and 96, I think will adversely affect the value of my house where I live right now. And the traffic, as the previous gentleman said, it'll be, it's difficult now to get out on the highway or to go straight across. It's just about impossible. And to have any high-value, like a Walmart or Home Depot or anything like that, just east of there, about a half mile, is a Publix. So why would you need some more high-value building put in there? Thank you.
My name is Nancy Stroker. I'm at 455 Conquest Road in the development, and the question I have is, with the possible connection to the school, and they're already talking about increased traffic, and it's going to just be a nightmare without some kind of lights or something in that area. And that's all.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. My name's Don Grammer. I live at 4916 Lental Drive in the subdivision. I'm also concerned if we put a high-density commercial use in that area, it's going to create more traffic. We have a lot of traffic there, like everybody's already said. My daughter has already had a wreck at that intersection. We've had several wrecks at that intersection already, and I'm concerned that we're creating a hazardous situation. So I'd like to make sure that we consider that when you're making this decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr.
Hello, John Vassar, 4823 Franklin Road. One of our main concerns is the 41 additional houses that's going to be on the RSA lots, 8,000 square foot lots. This is even, at the time of the original agreement for the neighborhood, it was considered that the 10,000 square foot lots were kind of a compromise on the neighborhood's part because, you know, on the surrounding properties, because we wanted to protect the value of what the properties surrounding it were already at. So we didn't want to decrease our value. And such a high-density program coming in, it was at the time, you know, everybody thought it would decrease our value, and so the compromise at the time was, well, we'll only go down to RS-10. So I can appreciate, you know, capitalism. You take a risk by a large piece of property, you go through all this trouble and expense to develop it, and you want to protect your asset, and you don't want to cut your profit so much. So whenever you lose a part of the property, maybe you want to pick up some more units by making the lot sizes smaller. Well, that takes care of the original investor, but it doesn't take care of the surrounding properties, and it also doesn't protect the people who bought into the actual neighborhood itself, because they bought in understanding it was going to be one way, and now it's being changed. So I don't see as this being beneficial to anyone except the owner of the property. And again, I can appreciate capitalism, and people should make a profit when they take a risk like that. But at the same time, it probably doesn't need to be where a person profits at the expense of others. So the other issue is, of course, the traffic, and it's been stated, several wrecks at those intersections, especially the one that faces Brinkley Road. That's a terrible intersection. And I have heard the crashes over the years and went and saw the carnage, and it's been really bad, and I don't know how it is all over the city. I just know right there at that one intersection, it's already bad the way it currently is. And now to hear that we're losing another way out of the neighborhood by not being able to tie into whatever that, the name of that, what? Merrymont. So now we're not going to be able to tie into that, to offer our people a way out another way, therefore more units, 41 more units, causing at least, you know, about 10, more than 10 trips per household in and out of the neighborhood. That's over 400 trips in and out, a lot more traffic and not another outlet out. So that's where we're at. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vassar. Anybody else?
Hello, I'm Michael James. I live at 4911 Compassion Lane. I'm against the amendment to allow 8,000 square foot lots. When I initially was looking at houses in 2008, having a bigger lot was one of the things that brought me to Kingdom Ridge. You go to Blackman Farm, you go to a lot of the other neighborhoods in Murfreesboro, all the houses are packed together, cars littering the streets. I think it'll have a negative effect on my property value. I mean, I just got my property value back to what I paid for my house, especially with that market downturn over the last few years, and I'm afraid that this is going to put me right back underneath. That's pretty much, I just wanted to express that.
Thank you, Mr.
Joe Swanson Jr., 1188 Park Avenue, Chairman Lamb, Commission, staff. Thank you for this opportunity to present this project to you. I'd like to address a couple of things that I heard as concerns. The one thing that I don't know that was mentioned, I didn't hear if it was, is that around the perimeter of this development, was approved in 2003, there was a layer of 15 or 12 lots, and then we stepped into a 12 or a 10-size lot. That perimeter around the subdivision will remain in place as originally agreed upon. As to the commercial portion of this amendment, which is now on the table, you know, as I am in real estate, one of the things that I look at is what do my customers, what are they asking me for? What do they want? Right now, I have two contracts. One of those contracts, well, it's an LOI. I hadn't gone to contract stage because I need to go through this, and this is what has really brought me in some part to this occasion tonight. Got an LOI on one, but the company, it's a national company, it's a retailer, they are adamant that they will not go if they are in a homeowners or a POA, a Property Owners Association. So that puts me in an awkward place, because I would like to build the building, sell the land, build the building, and move on, because once you get one in, more typically will come as we start to see this economy turn around. The second contract is in the corner, and one of the specific uses that was disallowed or not permitted in the permitted use charts was drive-in restaurant and a gas station, convenience gas station. Both of those are disallowed at this point. They are allowed in the commercial highway. And I am working right now with a convenience market that would, could, go on the corner there. That is why I'm requesting, or part of the reason why I'm requesting the commercial addendum. The other thing is, although it's 19 acres, there's roughly an acre to an acre and a half that will not be buildable. It's in the floodway or the high flood plain. And since that's the case, we're looking at doing more of a regional detention area for this property, so that we don't have spotted detention areas for water quality and water quantity controls due to regulations. On the accidents, I understand what the people are feeling here tonight. I think if you have not been through that experience, whether it be yourself or a child, they can be very traumatic. I will say that in the original documentation, we had, the Swansons had agreed to participate in the signalization at that interchange when it was warranted. What dictates that warranty, I don't know. That would be a traffic question. I don't know if the state's involved, but we did agree that when it became prudent or necessary, that we would participate in the signalization of that interchange. Now, to the homes and the smaller sizes, part of it is economics, part of it is that that's what buyers are asking me for. Not all of them, I agree, but enough, significantly enough that I felt that it was time to pursue this, also adding in the fact that we do have the stormwater controls now, the regulations, so that consumes some lots and some yield. The other thing was that with the new regulations and some of the new processes that we've adopted, that improve what we're doing, okay, as a development as a whole and as a community, is that development costs have gone up 25%, 35%. So there's an economic reality to this, that with losing lots, increased cost, me being asked for smaller lots, and that is why, that's the reasons that we're here tonight. One of the things I did want to mention is that about a year and a half ago, I ran the sizes on the houses. The average size is right in the 1,750 square foot range in Kingdom Ridge. There are a few 1,400s. There are some that even get up into 2,800 square feet on the larger lots. If you have any further questions for me at this time, I'd be happy to answer them, but...
Let me conclude the public hearing, and then we may have to recall you, Mr. Swanson. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before I close the public hearing, would anybody else like to make any further comments? Seeing they want to come forward, I'm going to-
I do have a question for Tom.
If you, I'm sorry, sir, you've already, you've already come up, so-
Oh, I was gonna ask-
I'm sorry, I can't, I can't allow it. Anybody else? Okay, in that case, the public hearing's closed. Mr. Young?
My favorite topic is always traffic. And Mr. Bontiander is in the room, and he's heard all this, and Mr. Adelot, have we done a preliminary traffic study to see if this warrants a red light yet?
I believe that Mr. Bontiander and his staff monitor that situation ongoing. It's not that they have to do one periodically, they just monitor it ongoing. I'm very certain that they're aware of the accident history. They are probably receiving calls about the intersection already. At such point as the warrants are there, and what they're going to look at is a variety of things, the traffic, the turn movements, where people are going, the time of day, the peak hour, the traffic, the accident history, all that sort of thing will be factored into it. But ultimately, it would be something that we would look to signalize. Part of what may, for lack of a better word, provoke the issue would be when a subdivision section is turned in. We look at the number of lots, and that's, at some point in time, a subdivision will be turned in that will get the warrants over that hump. Sort of like our situations with streets like Kingdom, not Kingdom Ridge, but Kingsridge and Brentmead, a place where we've received lots of calls and lots of interest about signal, but the warrants have never got there. But we monitored ongoing, and we, in some cases, we are very anxious to see the signal because we view it as a good thing, but the state has been unwilling to allow it on the state highway. Let me address the traffic also on another matter. I heard the comment very clearly about the one-way-in situation, and that does cause a little bit of the situation. In the very near future, there will be another subdivision section that will open up Rucker Lane, and that's going to act as another way for this subdivision to get to Rucker Lane, which is a street that we're looking to rebuild. The city will be looking to rebuild Rucker Lane, and the Swansons will be participating in that reconstruction, by the way, as part of their subdivision approval. But that will be another way to get to a signalized intersection on Highway 96. Another thing about this is that the plan development includes a street connection to change the street pattern to allow a street to connect towards the overall creek elementary, to connect towards Veterans Parkway. You may want to examine the program book that we have, if you haven't already seen it. You can see it on the map that Ms. Akers made in her presentation of the street. And part of that is looking for ways to improve the traffic conditions. Right now, all the traffic to come and go from the subdivision has to go up to- Right now, all the traffic to come and go from the subdivision has to go up to Highway ninety-six. A lot of it is going right to Brinkley Road to head on to the Blackman High School. We want to look for a way to diversify that, to allow for more of one-way-in and out, to look for ways to get to signalized intersections, and look to the future when we will see a signalization of the intersection of Brinkley Road. So I think we're looking, we're thinking and looking ahead to improving the traffic conditions, but some of it is development-driven. Mr. Swanson's building a subdivision. He's building the streets in there, so he's, as his development progresses, some of those connections will be made. One of them that the city needs to struggle with, though, is, Mr. Swanson will lay the groundwork for making that east-west connection towards overall Creek Elementary, but the question is going to be, will the city be willing to participate in the construction of the bridge? The bridge is going to be a, basically, a half-million-dollar structure, and it would not be the kind of structure that we would expect a developer to pay all on his own. After all, it's not in his subdivision, he didn't need it. But the Swansons are willing to participate in that, they're willing to pay for a proportionate share. The question is going to be, will the city be interested in it? If this application moves forward in the way that it is proposed, with the street pattern as was presented in the illustration tonight, and it goes on the city council, immediately after that, if it gets approved, we'll be sitting down at the table with Mr. Swanson and his family to negotiate what their proportionate share will be and the timing of the street construction. So I'm sort of high alerting the planning commission to that, and also to our city council members on the planning commission, that that's a very big issue. If we, if we don't want to see that connection, it dies now. If we do want to see that connection, we'll want to make it as part of the discussion tonight as to what we're going to do. Because I do think that our city manager is going to be looking to the council for some guidance on this capital improvements plan and how we're going to pay for that structure. And yes, the Swansons will be participating in the construction of that. We've already had that discussion, and I see Mr. Swanson is gently nodding his head in the affirmative.
I think we need to let Mr. Balachandra review his statistics and look at the accident scale, schedule on that, and I want to know, whatever happens tonight, I want to know about a traffic light in there, because I think it's important. It may not warrant it. I find it's ironic sometimes that you really need to build more houses in the subdivision to create more traffic so you can get the warrants, I know it sounds crazy, to get the warrants to justify the traffic light, because the state won't just let, won't let us just pop up a traffic light anywhere we want to. The state still controls ninety, the major road.
Mr. Young and Ms. Blankvision, at our next day meeting, we'll have Mr. Balachandra prepared to answer that question and give a presentation on where we stand and what kind of warrants would be required.
And as far as the future connections concerned into the school, I think that was decided a long time ago, that we need that connection into the school. For an example, if a parent wants to take this child to the new school, they've got to go out on the Franken Road, go down and turn on Veterans and come back. That's a two-mile loop that's totally unnecessary with that connection through.
Should we consider a deferral on this? Mr. Swanson, what kind of timeframe are you on? Would a deferral be that detrimental to you?
What would the purpose of the deferral be?
Well, to allow the staff a little time to report back to the planning commission on current traffic situations and future impact of commercial changes that he's talking about and the school situation.
We'll certainly, but I'd like some guidance on what you're expecting, because I might lose this to answer some of your question on that, that we, but if you give me some guidance, I'll report back.
Mr. Ailott, correct me if I'm mistaken, and I am quite often, but seventeen acres is really not big enough for a big box.
It would be hard-pressed to put a big box on the scale of a Walmart on that property. A Kroger's could fit very conveniently in that kind of acreage. And a Kroger's, I consider it a big box.
Okay. I don't, but that's okay.
How, you know, your comment with respects to whether the city council would want to participate or truly want to build this bridge and the Swansons participate in that cost, I mean, is that, is that part of a budget process that's not going to be known until June or July, or is that a discussion that could be had prior to that?
I brought the discussion up so that it would be something that would be part of the discussion as it went through the process, particularly with the city council, so that there'd be some foreknowledge that that issue would come back. I did have a discussion with our city manager before this application was brought to the planning commission on this point, and his first impression was, well, let's see how it fares with the public. If it's rejected by the public, it may be no need to move it forwards to the council. If it gets past the planning commission and it's with a positive recommendation, then we will amp up our efforts to begin that. The funding for it.
Mr. Ailott, what is the projected construction timeframe of overall Creek Elementary School?
It's set to open this fall. It's under construction and it is well underway.
So will the bridge catch up?
It's unlikely that the bridge will be able to catch up with it. The bridge will take the better part of a year for design and construction.
So they have a two-mile loop for a period of time?
Well, probably not too awful. Well, yes, that would be the case, there would be, but there's still more than lane to the south when that is, connection's made with the subdivision section is coming.
Mr. Young?
Mr. Swanson, there you are. What, how many total lots are we talking about? Ms. Akers? You've got that right in front of you.
Is it a whole thousand?
Yes, ma'am.
Six hundred and seventy-two acres.
Okay. Mr. Swanson, what is your build-out on that number of lots over a period of time? How many do you expect, in a reasonable market, to build out? And I know you have some idea of what that would be.
I would say ten to fifteen years.
So if you've got six hundred acres, sixty lots a year would be ten, six hundred, is that's...
Sixty lots a year, ten years.
I have a question, Ms. Akers. Is truly the net gain forty-plus lots, or is there a consideration made with respects to the fact that when this was initially approved, there was not the stormwater requirements that there is today? So, based upon this revised plan, there are nodes, for the lack of a better term, with respects to where stormwater's going to go. So, by reducing it to RS eight, is there truly a forty-one gain, or that's not the case based upon the stormwater situation? You lost lots with respects to that?
Yes.
It's a little unclear, I'm trying to remember if I can still bring this up, but show you...
Goes back to your point earlier that you didn't know exactly how many lots were approved from the beginning, I see.
Right. What happened when the plan was approved, when they came off the board? No one ever revised that plan?
Okay. I recall that, I apologize.
Yeah, so I kind of had to go kind of count by my fingers and try, painfully do it, and it comes out where we lose lots when we first, if we go back to the R, the ten, the ten thousand, because they were shown as eight previously. If we try to take those eights and put them back to tens, we kind of calculate approximately how many that would be, and then we lost some for this detention areas. So we do think there's about anywhere from thirty-four to forty-one. So I presented you the max amount to kind of give you the worst case.
And I apologize, because you went over that at our last meeting, so I apologize for that.
That's okay.
Any other questions from the planning commission to either the staff or the applicant?
I'll make a comment, Mr. Lane.
Yes, sir.
Looking at the plan here, the, something that I find a little interesting, and I voted on this eight years ago, but I can't remember what I did. The outer perimeter of the whole subdivision is RS fifteen and twelve all the way around. So, the perimeter of the, of the new section, that undeveloped section, is bordered by larger lots. I think that's a real positive. Another thing is that there is a, there's several really nice subdivisions in this city that are RS eight, that have three hundred, three hundred thousand dollar houses on them. There's a mental gap sometimes going between RS fifteen and RS twelve, but you can build the same house on either lot. You can build usually the same house on a ten as you could an eight. So, I, looking at the experience of what's happened in other parts of the city, I don't think that's a real negative. I'm sure some of you will disagree with that, but I don't think going from a ten to an eight is a real, is a real negative. There's a lot of people that want smaller lots for less lot maintenance, and I think someone pointed out that a lot of people, not everybody, but some people want smaller lots, so they don't have as much maintenance on that lot. Now, sometimes it's a hard jump mentally to think that you can put a bigger house on a smaller lot, but you really can. I don't know if that's worth anything or not.
My wife cuts our yards, so I don't mind the yard, large yards.
I'm not commencing.
Okay, what are the wishes of this commission?
Chairman, I move for approval of the recommendation.
Motion is made, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Just a point of clarification, and that is for both to remove the area that's...
The proposal as is.
To our commercial highway and the amendments to the remainder of the plan.
Correct.
The proposal as read, here. What's just made, and seconded, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion carries. Second public hearing is a zoning application for approximately one point four acres to be rezoned from commercial local to commercial highway along Mercury Boulevard. Mr. Kevin McKnight as applicant. Ms. Green?
Thank you, sir. Our next public hearing is for you to consider rezoning approximately one point four acres from its current CL zone, Commercial Local District, to CH, Commercial Highway District. This property is located north of Mercury Boulevard and along First Avenue, and you can see on the map that's before you. The properties to the north are zoned RS eight, the single-family residential district, and RS ten, which is also a single-family residential district. The property across First Avenue is zoned RD, and that's for a duplex zoning. The properties that front along Mercury Boulevard, as this property does, across Highway seventy or Mercury Boulevard, is zoned CH, and that's Commercial Highway District. And then you can see there is a planned commercial district node at the corner of Middleton Street Boulevard and Mercury Boulevard, which is a farm and sea located at the site. The property is currently zoned CL, or Commercial Local District, and has been zoned such since nineteen eighty-four, when we adopted the CL district. Prior to nineteen eighty-four, the property was zoned what we termed B one, which is the rough equivalent of a CH zoning. The building was constructed with several large overhead doors along the sides of the building facing First Avenue. There are a couple photos that are taken from Google Earth included in your agenda materials, so you can get a feel for what the structure actually looks like. And the property is also located in the overlay zone, and that's in the CCO, that's our city core overlay district, and you may remember, a couple years ago, we adopted that district for this area. So this property, if you do choose to change the zoning from CL to CH, it will remain in the CCO overlay district. The owner wishes to use the property, the structure for use that's not permitted in the CL district, and that's what's motivated this request to change it to CH. I believe that motor vehicle sales for service or automotive repair is what specifically he desires, and he believes the building is well-suited for it with those roll-up doors that you can see in the photo. And so, his request for you to change the property to CH would allow him to use it as he sees fit. He has mentioned that there have been several tenants interested in leasing their property, but of course, back out when they find out that the use is not permitted for the zoning. The property across Mercury Boulevard is zoned CH and is the developed shopping center, and I believe that the Peebles, the Peebles was located across there. So the planning commission should conduct a public hearing prior to making a recommendation regarding the zoning change request from CL to CH. I don't believe there's a representative in the applicant in the audience, or there is, they haven't talked to me. So, you're welcome to introduce the project if you'd like, give us your name, and then we can open the public hearing. If there are any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Good evening, my name's Kevin McKnight. I'm here with my mother, Princess McKnight, she's the actual owner of the property, and she pretty well stated very, very good, very well what we were here for, to ask for a zoning that would allow us to operate, well, lease a building, a business that would operate a automotive repair service, which you think is very suitable for that location.
Thank you, Mr. McKnight.
Thank you.
Okay.
I have a question.
Mr. Young, you have a question?
Ms. Green, the lots on the right side of this, the four lots, what are they?
They're zoned RS ten, single-family residential district. Are you...
Are they occupied houses now?
Yes, they are.
I think so.
Okay.
Mr. Ailott would know very well.
I used to reside in one of them.
So by changing this zoning, would the buffer change?
The type of buffer would, wouldn't, he wouldn't have to install it unless there was a redevelopment of the property. So changing the zoning won't mean that he needs to go in and install that fifteen-foot buffer. It could continue to look the way it does now. If they were to modify the building or the parking, then that's when that would come in, but changing the zoning won't trigger that. The buffer would be required now, but there's not one because it was developed before these buffer regulations existed.
And so, by having it commercial highway, and say he wants to lease it to someone that is going to operate an auto service business, would that cause a new dynamic with respects to the parking area that would then cause the parking lot to have to be redeveloped, or...
It's likely that it will not.
Okay.
We'd look at it, of course, the square footage of the building, but it's likely that it will not.
Okay.
I have a question.
Mr. Young?
Will this be a car sales lot, or will it be a repair lot?
They could do either. I think the request is repair.
Repair lot, a business, all repair business.
He's selling repairs.
Okay. I had to buy him a lot.
Any other questions?
I have one. Do you have proposed tenants? You have several, I guess, that have been required by...
Yeah, we have two tenants in the property right now. This particular portion of the building is vacant, and we've had some interest, the potential people that would want to lease it for operating that type of business.
Any other questions? If not, I'll open the public hearing, asking if anybody would come forward that'd like Okay, so I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Ailott, do you have anything to say?
I was just going to remind the planning commission, and one of the things we did discuss was the possibility of amending the CL zone to allow the automotive repair and motor vehicle service. That was discussed by planning commission, and you all decided that that was not the course that you wanted to go. Instead, you wanted instead to at least conduct a public hearing and gain public input before making a recommendation on this request. But I wanted to reiterate that that was something that you all did discuss as one alternative.
If there's no other questions, we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to approve.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. The third and final public hearing of the evening is a zoning application for approximately four point one acres to be rezoned from RS twelve to RM sixteen, south of Salem Highway, State Route ninety-nine, Old South Properties Incorporated, this applicant. Ms. Green?
Thank you, sir. Our third and final public hearing this evening is for you to consider changing the zone of property from its single-family residential district zone, which is RS twelve, to RM sixteen, and that's multifamily residential district. This property is identified in the... This property is identified in the area that's showing up purple on the TV screen. You can see that it is the middle portion of a larger tract of land that's located south of New Salem Highway. The property is adjacent to property that's zoned RM sixteen to the east, and then the property to the south, north, and west is zoned RS twelve, in that single-family residential district. The property to the north continues with this property zoned CF, and that's Commercial Fringe District. The RS twelve property that's immediately adjacent to this property is the Bell Reef Subdivision. The application is to rezone the property, which is approximately 4.1 acres, from single-family residential district to multifamily residential district, to combine it with that RM sixteen property, which you see on the map, located directly adjacent to it on the east. That RM sixteen property has access to St. Andrews Drive, and frontage and access to St. Andrews Drive, and it will be expected that this property, of course, will have access to St. Andrews Drive through the RM sixteen property. Under the RS twelve zoning district, it's possible that this property could develop with approximately twelve single-family lots, depending on, of course, the design and the drainage plan. Under the RM sixteen zone district, it would be possible to develop sixty-five multifamily dwellings on the property, which is an increase of approximately fifty-three dwelling units in the area shaded blue. The applicant has a representative here this evening with a PowerPoint presentation would like to go over the details of the site. You did ask, when this was scheduled for public hearing, that they come up with a sample concept plan, knowing that this is not the site plan, or at the time we reviewed site plan, but to see how the site would work and function, especially as it relates to the adjacent properties, and what kind of screening and enhancements can be made to the property to make sure to reduce any negative impacts. Also, you wanted to see the type of structures that would be constructed, or being proposed to be constructed by Old South Properties, who is the developer for the property. Ms. Cherie Akers will go through the application. If you have any questions, we'll be glad to answer them, either before or after the public hearing. We should conduct a public hearing prior to making your recommendation to City Council.
Again, Cherie Akers with Huddleston Steel, representing Old South. Mr. John Floyd is here with us this evening, too, to answer any questions. As Margaret Ann has indicated, it's approximately a little over four acres that we're proposing to rezone from RS twelve to RM sixteen. I don't think this is coming up. It's playing on here, but. As you can tell, the property located to the east of this site, if you recall, it became before you, back in, I think, November, December, November with you, and December at the City Council, and we rezoned that parcel to RM sixteen, the weaklands. And Old South has, under contract, to purchase that property and also this additional four acres, in an effort to develop a townhome project development. This is a preliminary plan that you requested at the workshop that we bring in. Again, this is just preliminary, I just want to make that clear. We haven't run any drainage calculations. We just kind of laid out the building footprints and how many units that would yield and where their placement may be. This site plan is yielding about eighty-four units, townhome units, and what Mr. Floyd is proposing is a project similar to Ennsbrook, that you all may be aware of, out on two thirty-one. And these are some pictures to share with you of that product and that development that many people are aware of and like. The difference is, we are going to kind of upgrade a little bit more at this site. Old South is proposing to use a combination of hardy and brick and vinyl and some stone, the incorporation of some stone. And I think he's willing to commit to the vinyl being less than about fifteen percent of the facade. And when the stone is used, it most likely will be on the front of the buildings. And just to take you back to the site plan for just a moment, I know some of the concerns might be the single family that are located on the west. We will have a type C buffer that is required, and the units that butt up next to those single family, there's also quite a difference for the building setback, and that's the rear property. We'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Again, Mr. Floyd is here as well, and he can probably provide some insight into the vision for the project.
Any questions for Ms. Akers?
Would the streets be public or private?
Private.
Private.
So, would garden collection?
So, would garden collection.
Ms. Akers, the buildings.
Did we show that dumpster?
The building's backing up to the existing lots.
On the west?
Uh-huh. Will they be one-story or two-story units?
Will they be one-story or two?
The in-units are traditionally one-story, and the middle units are a story and a half. All of the units will have the master bedroom down. These traditionally are, it's not required, but ninety-five percent of our sales are normally seniors, you know.
Like Mr. Young?
Well, they might be a little bit older than Doug.
That's not good enough. Thank you, Mr. Floyd. Any other questions? If not, I'll open the public hearing, asking if anybody would come forward that'd like
Good evening. My name is Rolanda Brown, and I reside at twenty-six thirty-nine Bell Reef Drive, right on the corner where they're proposing to build the townhouses. I am against building any multifamily housing in that area, because I have a concern that it will depreciate the property, my home value. Also, it's not equipped in that area. This is a very small subdivision. In addition to that, the other builder that has recently built homes back there, we were lied to. We were told that all of these homes would have total brick on them. They've put vinyl on them, and they aren't even able to sell those as of yet. So, I do have a very valid concern about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Anybody else?
Hello. I'm Jamie Darnell. I live at twenty-seven eighteen United Drive. I'm here to object to this zoning change proposed by Old South. I feel like the use of this property is inconsistent with the existing zoning. It sits in between two subdivisions. And I feel like it'll be interference of the property value and the rights of the residents in both Bell Haven and Bell Reef subdivisions. Furthermore, this zoning change will severely alter the essential character of both subdivisions and will negatively affect the property value. So, I would encourage you to please vote no on this proposal. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Darnell. Anybody else?
Good evening. Hi, this is Valerie Lyons. I live in Bell Reef Subdivision on Bell Reef Drive, twenty-six forty-five. I'm concerned because of depreciation of property value. And my concerns are that you are going to have an increase of eighty-four units in the same small allotted acreage, land acreage, that would have been four or five houses being built. But more people doesn't sound sensible to me. And the setup of our neighborhood is not equipped for that much trafficking, and it's not the prime location for its multifamily dwellings, because you have the two singles that is in front and behind and on the sides. And I'm concerned, because we were promised from the very beginning, one of the reasons that we purchased this property, is that it was going to only be single-family dwellings, and that it was going to be built a certain way with certain amount of houses for as the qualities and high-end and so forth. And these promises have been kind of reneged on. And to hear, to say, what is going to be promised again, a high-end dwelling, and it's going to have stone, and it's going to have bricks, you know, I don't know if it's going to be another untrue. So, you know, I feel like it will depreciate our property value. I live right on the corner, and I'm not for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lyons. Anybody else?
Hello. I'm Pam Beverly. I live at twenty-six oh six Anthem Way. I don't know. I wish I had the little thing up there. My home is right here. There's the property here. My daughter and her husband, or future husband, live right here across the street. Their property backs up. And I am speaking for the lady, Helen Lance, that lives in, that just purchased a home, built a home here, that connects to the property. I must say at first, I was thrown aback by townhomes. I did used to work for Mr. Floyd. I've sold a ton of those, not Ennsbrook, but I sold a ton of the Indian Creek townhomes. I myself did not want that there. So, not with Cherie. She calmed my fears, and they've assured me, she and Ms. Floyd, that they will be Ennsbrook type properties. I hire end property, and I did go look at Ennsbrook today. I did not sell those homes, so I've not seen, been inside. I went inside one. If this is the case, I do not oppose this. I would rather have that than apartments, which I know, my understanding is that this section could be apartments. I do not want apartments. I would much rather have what they're proposing to build. So, you know, with the caveat that, you know, it's going to be just fifteen percent vinyl, the stone and the brick, you know, there is a need. I am a realtor. I work in Williamson County. I sell higher-end homes over there. So, I am familiar with a higher-end product, and I know that Murfreesboro does need a higher-end, less-maintenance home product, and a higher-end product. So, I have to say sorry to the disappointment of these people, but I don't oppose that particular product. I'd much rather have that than apartments there. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else? I don't think anybody left. Seeing nobody come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Questions, Mr. Young?
Ms. Aitlott, I promise I'll shut up here eventually. The entrance will be on St. Andrews, is that correct?
It's my understanding it will be off St. Andrews, although there may be a possibility that they may have a direct access to Highway ninety-nine. That's yet to be worked out. The concept does not show the connection to Highway ninety-nine.
But there'll be no way to get through into the Bell Reeves and the Athena Drive, and I can't read that.
That is the plan that has been, in fact, I wanted to go over that. The Silver Springs Court will extend straight across, and there will be lots on both sides, and no street connection into this property.
But no.
And so, there will be no street connection from Bell Reef or from the other Bell subdivision.
So, we won't have to worry about traffic going through the other established subdivision to get out?
That is my expectation, and that's what they're showing on their concept plan.
Ms. Aitlott, I think there was some confusion in there, because one of the ladies, and it may have been Ms. Lyons, was alluding to how many units was going to be built. I think we need to point out, this was only pertaining to the 4.1 acres, not the entire tract. The rest of this tract is already zoned, RM sixteen, which is, which would allow apartments or a condominium-type development. We're talking about the 4.1 acres that is between that RM sixteen tract and, what is that, Anthem?
Anthem. Yes, sir. There is some confusion. Part of the confusion is because in their efforts to provide a concept, they provide a concept for the entire property, that shows the entire total number of units in the order of eighty-four for the entire development, not just the four acres. So, they're showing, they're showing a concept for the bigger property that includes what's already zoned, the RM sixteen, and the additional four acres that they're proposing. In reality, the number of units on that four acres will be...
Twenty-one.
Twelve or thirteen.
Yeah, twelve or thirteen at the most.
And I think this young lady made a good point. You know, the balance of this property is already zoned for apartments, so you know, I'm familiar with Mr. Floyd's development in Ennsbrook. Now, if this is going to mirror that development in Ennsbrook, that is a very quality development, very quality, high-quality residential development with very nice condominium units that are nice as many single-family developments that you'll see anywhere. It's not a, it's not a mass-produced development at all, high-quality all the way. Any other questions?
There's no other question, Mr. Chairman Lam. I'll make a motion. Will you approve?
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. That concludes the public hearing portion of our agenda. Mr. Aitlott will go to staff reports and other business. You have one item under other business that we'll have coming up, a street name proposal. Right, Ms. Aitlott?
Yes, sir, I do. I have laid out for you an illustration on your desk. It looks like this. There's a map. The Mercer City Schools Board of Education has adopted a mascot for the new school, the Overall Creek Elementary School, and that's the Overall Otters. And to, characteristically, if they can get the mascot's name for the street and for the school, that's what they want to do. So, they want to name this, the street in front of the new Overall Creek Elementary School. They want to name it Otter Trail. The school board's already nominated that name. It has been cleared by Mr. Blomley and Emergency Services, and I would like for the Planning Commission to take action to so-name the street in front of Overall Creek Elementary School to Otter Trail.
So moved.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries.
And just as a follow-up, we are excited about the school. It is moving forward well. It looks like it'll be opening on time this fall.
Wonderful, wonderful. Any other staff reports, Ms. Aitlott?
No, sir.
If there are none, we stand adjourned.